There we go.
Wait a minute, we got, we did get someone. A replacement.
All right, welcome everyone. Today is Monday, June 2nd. It's twelve forty-seven P M in the afternoon. This is the Board of Commissioners's weekly work meeting. We're going to start the meeting today. This, I'll be chairing today. Commissioner Gage Forer with me is Commissioner Jim Harvey. We're excusing Commissioner Sharon Bolo. She had another commitment, so. Anyway, welcome. I'm going to start the meeting with the discussion and our action for approval of those minutes for the work session held on May nineteen, twenty twenty-five. Seems like we missed a week there, but we did.
Well, we had that holiday.
Had a little holiday.
Anyway.
Okay.
Motion to approve the minutes for May nineteen.
Thank you. Have a motion. I'll second that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The minutes for that day are approved. Let's go to our second agenda item, which is a discussion regarding Brookview Rezone. Felix Leverino, Charlie Ewer, Rick Grover, Liam and Gary Myers are all here. We've got a few extras with us. But Felix, you're listed. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, commissioners, and then good day to everybody. So this, this we have scheduled for tomorrow, a public hearing. And this is something that Commissioner Harvey requested that we have a quick discussion, just a quick recap of some of the details regarding this project. Forty acre rezone from A one to R one fifteen. I have a few slides I'd like to share. Here's the connectivity plan showing the planned roads. The, you'll notice that fourteen hundred south there on this map shows it as a minor collector. That's an eighty foot right away. And then you have just to the south of that, you've got sixteen hundred south street. And that's a, my, I want to say neighborhood. That's a neighborhood through street. So that one's sixty-six feet. And then those interior neighborhood lots, those are all sixty feet right away, is okay? And then going on to this map, I brought this a little greater detail to show you some of the connections that will be made to adjacent properties. So you can see, if you look all around this, all around the edge of this, you've got two outlets to the north, two to the west, two to the east and two to the south. How it's designed that way. This is a forty acre parcel. It's designed that way to, to maximize the connectivity to existing developments. So the Giorgio subdivision to the south. And then the Anselmi Acres to the west. And currently the, there's no development to the east. That's vacant, but those two connections to the north connecting up with the fourteen hundred south street. Here's the street cross-sections. Again, that, that, those interior neighborhood streets. This is what you'll see. You'll see the, the street trees on both sides. They'll have a five-foot sidewalk on both sides. Some space for parking, parking strip. Things like that. And then the sixty-six foot right of way. This is for that sixty, that sixteen hundred south. Let me go back. I just want to make sure we're all clear. So yeah, that sixteen hundred south street, that's when, that's the sixty-six foot right of way. So here's that cross-section.
What about fourteen hundred south? What will that eventually be?
Yeah, so that one's the next slide.
Right?
So there's the eighty foot. So in essence, what you'll have is on the on that side of the street, you'll, you'll have half of this cross-section. That's a developer's responsibility. You'll have a five-foot sidewalk in particular, but you'll also have a, a wall, a, a rock wall.
How come?
On that edge.
Felix, how come it's five foot on one side and it's ten feet on the other?
Yeah, so that would be if, if they were developing the entire street cross-section.
So you're putting the other five feet on the other when they develop that.
So in, in this, in this case, what you would have is on the Brookview, let me, let me go back to the map here. I just want to make sure I'm talking this, saying this correctly. Okay. Okay, so the fourteen hundred south, that area that fronts the Brookview, that will be a half of an eighty foot right of way. So you'll have some, some asphalt upgrades. You'll also have the, the street trees and the five-foot sidewalk. And the, yes, and the, the, the stone wall. And no access for lots on to fourteen hundred south. So all those, all those lots will access interior from interior streets.
Yeah, but so if you put that a couple more, what you're doing is you're putting the ten-foot sidewalk on those who develop on the north side of that.
That's right. Yes.
Why, why would you put that ten-foot sidewalk on the north and not on the south?
We're doing that as, as a ma, a means to have more, some consistency throughout the county. Where it's preferable that the path, the ten-foot pathways go on the north side of the streets and the east side of the streets. And that would be throughout the entire. It's just really to have better cohesive, you know, pathways. So then Ash, if you could chime in on that too.
Just, you'll get more sunlight on the north side of the road to try and help melt the snow is some, I think, one of the thoughts we had.
Okay. Also, also in addition, commissioners, one of our future plans we're looking to do is a pedestrian grade separated crossing over the railroad tracks and over twelfth street. So that having a trail on the north side of this section of the road does make sense and will lead to that. Pushing, pushing traffic or pedestrian traffic back and forth.
Great. And then I also wanted to highlight almost quick. I know I'm taking more time than I wanted, but so this is from the development agreement. And the last time we met, there was some concern as to what type of improvements would be required by the developer. Mister David Lay Lowly, and we've come to a, a pretty good what, what I think is, is a pretty good workable solution to getting the improvements along fourteen hundred south street, being that it is a sub-sanders street. So you'll notice, so eight point five point one point one, that first one where it says fourteen hundred south street.
All right, Felix, go back to that overall map that you've pointed again. I want to see where those connections are. One more back. There we go.
Yeah.
All right. So this is the Giorgio here, right?
That's right.
This is, now this is best open space.
What is the north of there?
This is Anselmi here.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have your school?
The school district own that now? They do currently own it. I don't, to, to our knowledge, we're not aware of any plans they have to build anything on it yet. However, that doesn't mean that that couldn't happen in the future, right?
I'm basically trying to put a school there based upon what happened recently.
Yeah.
Okay, so they're going to connect here to the Giorgio.
They're, and they're going to make the road all the way through into Giorgio. So that road, this road right here will come all the way through and hook on to seventeen hundred south. This road, they're going to make that road go all the way through, right?
Yep. Yes.
And I'm assuming they're going to do the same thing for Anselmi.
Yes, and stuff was already cut it up to the, to that parcel. Yeah, those make the connection.
Okay. And then fourteen hundred south, basically from here to here.
Mm-hmm. That will have, that will be built as the cross-section.
Better sidewalk.
Street.
And seventeen hundred south, that sidewalk will be ten foot wide right there. What you just told me.
Seventeen or I would take sixteen.
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 Sixteen. Sixteen will have sidewalk, but it doesn't have the trail.
It does.
Does it have the trail?
Yeah, it ought to be ten feet. It's on the north side of the street.
Who's the developer?
Told me.
That's right.
Yes.
On Brookview?
Uh, the developer's Dave Lowly.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
It looks like he's selling the D on a horse. Yes.
Yeah, last I heard, that's right.
This, I'll just, I don't know. So refresh my memory. When they were here last time, we talked to them about improving fourteen hundred all the way up to the intersection.
Yeah, that's cool.
Right?
Yes.
So basically you're saying let them do just their frontage. So that still leaves a lot of traffic on a, what I would call a poor rope.
And that's a good point. And so if we look at the, the language in the development agreement, it does hold them to making improvements to fourteen hundred extending to that intersection thirty-five hundred.
Yes, that was kind of sense there.
Okay. So they will take it to thirty-five hundred west.
Yeah, but not the full cross-section, right? We're just going to have them widen asphalt.
That's right.
To a standard, right?
Yes. How about asphalt?
What was it? I believe it was like two feet. Now, we did ask for a traffic impact study commissioners to give us some recommendations regarding what's there. Right? The traffic impact study takes into a lot of things like existing traffic conditions.
Right.
Where future potential movements might go in and look at deficiencies that exist and give us some recommendations. They haven't fully provided a full traffic impact study. What they did provide was some traffic count generations. But it didn't actually identify specific deficiencies or improvements to be made.
Thanks.
One of the other trickier things here, Commissioner Forer, and you may have missed this while Ash is explaining, Commissioner Harvey, when we connect to the DeGiorgio subdivision to the south, the two roads there are forty seventy-five west and thirty-nine fifty west. And forty seventy-five does not actually exist in the DeGiorgio subdivision.
Right.
There is a right of way. And that, yeah, perfect. The right of way exists. However, the improvements in the DeGiorgio subdivision were never made at that point.
This house is using pretty much a private driveway right now. That's kind of how they use it.
So who owns the dirt?
We own it. It's dedicated to the county.
So we do have a dedication.
Yes, sir. We have sixty-foot right of way on both of those roads. So forty seventy-five is a little tricky where it hasn't really been exercised as a street. Thirty-nine fifty, it is paved up to maybe a couple of feet short of the boundary. However, there is some probably the best way to label it is significant encroachment from adjacent property owners that might need to be cleaned up through probably some, maybe some code enforcement. I'm guessing maybe potentially you're, it's probably the best way to, to handle that. But they put fences right up against the right of way. They've got vegetation that needs to be kind of cleaned up and trimmed up a little bit.
Are they going to be putting in those improvements?
Well, that's, that's kind of what we wanted to, to you guys to give us direction on is the road that doesn't exist, do we have Mister Willoli just take it to his subdivision boundary? Or do we take it all the way through to, through to, to where it connects in the DeGiorgio subdivision? And the same with thirty-nine fifty. The reason I ask is in the planning commissioners' recommendations, they specifically said, recommended making those connections where I'm, I don't know if they fully understood the lack of the one road and, and the other impact it might have on the other road. Does that make sense, commissioners?
Yeah, so if we don't make them take it all the way through to connect, who's going to pay for it?
Exactly.
You're not going to get the existing DeGiorgio subdivision to pay for it.
No, sir. No, sir, you're not.
You're going to get all the other people in unincorporated Weaver County to pay for it.
Yes, that's right. I think that leaves one option, and I don't really care for that option much.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's why we wanted to teed up to you for some direction on that, commissioners, and see what you want us to do.
Commissioner Harvey, thoughts, comments, questions?
Well, you know, it's too bad that the Giorgio, we didn't have to do that in the beginning, but that was a long time ago.
Long time ago.
And I don't know if it's really fair that these guys have to do that all the way from a fairness perspective.
Commissioner, one of the questions, we're trying, talking about this, is if we do make them make that connection all the way to the existing road, is it just asphalt to a certain width? Is it curb and gutter? Is it sidewalks? Like, I mean, that can, because that can add up, right?
Yeah, on to forty seven, we're talking forty seventy-five.
Yeah.
Both of them.
Yeah, especially this one. This one, the asphalt's, you know, maybe three or four feet short, maybe twenty-four foot wide. So it's probably okay. However, to that point, the DeGiorgio subdivision was built long enough ago, there were, there is no sidewalk inside the development.
Right.
So do we have the sidewalk stop at the boundary between the two developments? Do we take it to intersection tie-in? I mean.
Yeah. Well, you probably want, you're never going to get sidewalk in DeGiorgio.
That's right.
Right?
Unless we have a sudden windfall of money, we want to build it.
We have to do a lot of storm drain too, because.
Yeah. And it would be a.
Hold on, finish that thought. We have to do a lot of storm draining as well, because why?
There's not a lot of storm drain infrastructure in DeGiorgio subdivision.
Kind of a drainage swell adjacent.
Yeah.
And then it hasn't really been exercised for sidewalk, the right of ways.
Right.
There's obviously some encroachment that would be felt by us if we went in there to build sidewalk, you know, it'd be painful for the landowners that have kind of landscaped and beautified that corridor through there, which they, good for them. That's great. It's on, that's good they're doing it.
Well, one of the things we have to consider though too is the trail access. You got trail access going from north to south, but there's no trail access anywhere except for those roads.
That's right.
So that you're also eliminating trail access into Giorgio unless you do something like that, right?
Hundred percent, Commissioner. How, how's it written right now in the development agreement as far as those connections?
I don't know.
Does it mean just stub at the boundary or is it kind of defined as improving within the other subdivisions?
No. The necessary street improvements. Okay, let's see, connections to DeGiorgio. Developer shall make the necessary connection, street improvements to thirty-nine fifty west street and four zero seven five west street as determined by the county engineer in the sole discretion of the county engineer. And then a similar statement for the Anselmi.
Yes, does that mean just go to the boundary subdivision boundary?
Whatever Gary wants. That's what exactly what it means.
And we may want to be a little more clear about that.
I would like to be more clear. I'd like to be more clear.
Yeah.
To take, yeah.
So here's where I am. We're out of time, but my first concern is fourteen hundred south. Two feet. I don't know whether it does it, whether it should be three feet, three and a half. I don't know. You need your study to tell you.
Yes, sir.
But I, if we're going to require that, let's require something that the study comes back and says it's going to be safer at X number of feet.
This is the time.
That's the time to do it.
Okay.
On the others, I mean, as much as it may not seem fair, it doesn't do any good. Nobody's going to pay, well, we'll pay for it if we take, if we don't take it past the existing subdivision. So my opinion is it's got to go, it's got to connect through. I'm, I'm more concerned about traffic, getting traffic in and out of that than I am, obviously the sidewalk. That's just, it is what it is.
Yeah.
Um, so those are my, those are my two.
I came into this room thinking that those were going to go all the way through into that seventeen hundred street, because that's what I understood you to say last week, Felix, when I, when we met. So that's what it is.
Yeah.
And at least sidewalks to those other streets, you're not going to get sidewalks, but I would say sidewalks got to go to the other streets too. That's going to make it how those guys that live along there are going to be not happy.
We'll get with code enforcement. We'll move some fences.
Is that what the, is that what, Rick? Is that what the, uh, DeGiorgio, is that, is that what that says in the original agreement?
It doesn't say that in the original agreement, but the planning commission did talk about that, those roads going through.
Do they, do we own the property and the right of ways?
We own the right of way.
We own the right of ways. Now's the time to, then that even more so, then that's what he's got to do is go all the way through.
Yeah.
I think we're in agreement there.
Yes.
Okay. Get your study and then but I, I think we need to make sure that we clarify, so there's no dispute that he's going to come back and say, all you've got to do is take it to my subdivision. It's going to be up to DeGiorgio to do the rest.
Yeah.
I don't want to fight that battle.
Uh-uh.
So we need to get with our attorneys and make sure we have language in there that says that. We do that?
Yeah, we can do that if you want to specify. Yeah, we can do that.
Well, I always like to be a little more clear than unclear for some reason.
Save some lawsuit.
Okay, great.
Okay, anything else?
Yes, I, I guess the final question really would be is, do you think this is, would, would, would remain on tomorrow's agenda or should we postpone it?
I don't have an issue with it staying there as long as you.
Public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're good with it?
Yeah, sounds great.
Yeah.
Just be aware that you're going to have the traffic study back for, or the traffic state, what it is, what it is.
No, we don't, we don't have the full traffics of the, no. We may want to add a couple of conditions in there that addresses that and then also the road connections.
What I would do is just save us a little headache tomorrow or a little time. Just say that this is a staff recommendation, maybe incorporate what we just talked about. That, and then if the developer can say either I live with it or it doesn't. That's, that's up to him.
That's up to him.
Okay. Okay, thanks, gentlemen.
Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Appreciate you being here.
That works.
All right, let's move on to our next agenda item. One o'clock, we're running just seven minutes late. Discussion regarding Westbridge Meadows Rezone Proposal. We got Charlie with us. Where did I see Charlie?
Over here.
There he is. Okay, Charlie, Rick, Sean, Gary and Tammy. Tammy coming up?
Tammy may not be here.
Or she's right there.
Right there.
Man.
Where she may be there. Wow, Johnny on the block. Oh, yeah. Hey, Charlie, you're up.
Got the developers coming in as well.
Let me have a seat.
Good afternoon.
Well, we got a full house today.
Oh. Sitting over here.
Welcome.
Thanks.
Sorry, running just a little behind schedule, but we'll catch up now. Charlie is the man about speed.
Mr. Stacey.
Go ahead.
Um, thanks for this time. I've got a couple of things to hand out for you guys, some things that we haven't looked at yet on this project. This is the Westbridge Meadows Project. Um, what I've just given you is the planning commission recommendations on the first sheet. The second sheet is the memo that was the final memo that the planning commission reviewed for this project. And then that packet is the master plan for the project. Bones. And then, let's see. I think that was it. So, um, as you guys know, we've tried to bite this off into a few smaller pieces. It's a big project, fourteen hundred acres or so, with roughly thirteen thousand or so dwelling units being composed over the next fifty or so years. A couple of things that we've spoken with the app and about is that you need to talk to you guys a little bit about density and a little bit about phasing, a little bit about timing to make sure it's pretty clear that we're not talking about thirteen thousand two hundred dwelling units tomorrow. But we are talking about somewhere between zero and thirteen thousand two hundred over the next fifty years. Excuse me, let's see. Getting on the Zoom so I can give you guys a couple of little tidbits of information here. So we talked a little bit in our last meeting, our last discussion about water. Um, so today a little bit about density, we just kind of wanted to get you guys' take on this. We know it's a, it's a big ask. But if you look at how many development rights are entitled through zoning throughout all of unincorporated Weaver County, we're we're talking in the thirty to forty thousand dwelling units, just in the A one, A two, A three, F five, you know, all those zones. So everything's already zoned in the, in the unincorporated area for density. It's just a matter of getting entitlements for it. So just because we're offering thirteen thousand units doesn't mean that those are going to show up tomorrow. It can't be, they're going to show up tomorrow. The market is still going to govern how this is going to shape and, and work out for the long run. But we do know, because we've got developers asking their question, that right now there is a market for dwelling units. And I don't know if you read the paper the other day about the governor's address on housing availability and lack of housing availability in the, in the area. This is the general Wasatch Front area, but we know a lot of the vacant land left on the Wasatch Front is up here in Weaver County. Um, and frankly, you know, both sides, Weaver County, Alka Valley and Western Weaver. But Western Weaver seems to be a little bit easier picking, a little bit lowering fruit because it's already closest to good transportation infrastructure network. So really the question, this is kind of, kind of boils down to the same subjects we talked about when we talked about water. A question for you guys from a policy perspective is how will this area grow? Is it going to grow based off of market demand? Are we going to try and keep pace with the market? Or are we going to implement regulations to try and go slower than what the market is asking for? There are a lot of different long-term socioeconomic implications in those policy decisions. If we try and, uh, slow growth, uh, slow development, slow development patterns, what we do is we create a scarcity. We create a scarcity, then housing costs go up significantly. Uh, but if we allow growth to go a little bit too fast and outpace our ability to provide improvements and infrastructure for it, then all of a sudden, everybody else is paying for that density to come in. So we tried to take a very thoughtful and deliberate approach to this project in terms of density as well as in terms of infrastructure improvements. A lot of the density and a lot of the phasing that they're looking at will follow at the very least, transportation, infrastructure improvements. We know that they're going to need to build their own sewer system. We know that they're going to need to find their own water. We know that most of their drainage and floodwater and all that kind of, those kind of facilities are all boundaries in kind of things. It's a big enough project that, and it's isolated enough between the river railroad seventy-five hundred west. There's a not, there's not a lot of overlap between what they're providing inside of their boundaries and what needs to be provided for the growth of the rest of the community outside of the boundaries, with the exception of transportation, roads, trails, pathways. Uh, we even have asked them to reserve some land for two potential train stations, track stations and a linear sixty-foot wide linear easement for potential tracks lines to go off the south side of the railway. So when we're looking at the density and the growth in this project, our biggest concern was that the folks who currently live in Western Weaver County are going to have to deal with a lot more traffic at a pace that they're not ready for, that they haven't seen in the past. I know when we were starting our improvements on twelfth street, when we were looking at buying parts of front yards out, out west of forty-seven hundred west, we had a good conversation a good ten years ago with his landowner saying this is an improvement. This is a safety improvement need. And, and a lot of them came forward and said, hey, we've got a lot of concerns that if you're widening this road, you're just going to widen it for more development to happen. Now, chicken and egg, right? Does the, is the development come because the, the road got widened or is the road getting widened because development came? It's an age-old question, but we do know that we have built an expectation with those landowners. So one of the things that we wanted to make sure these guys were clear about is we don't want to see the level of service on twelfth street drop below a level service C. Right now, for the most part, for most parts of the areas, level service A. Maybe it goes down to B every once in a while, close to that forty-seven hundred west intersection. We don't want to drop below C before we start seeing other improvements and accesses to this property. So one thing that we've written into the draft development agreement that you have in front of you is as soon as twelfth street, it's starts to approach the bottom side of level service C, either twenty-five fifty west needs to be built with a bridge going into the project or eighteen hundred needs to be built with a bridge going into the project. So we base the phasing off of that kind of a need. The first phase is they, they can get X number of units until, as long as they've got sufficient emergency egress over the river. So they have to have a bridge over the river to, to do that. Second phase is based on the loading of twelfth street. Third phase is based on the loading of twenty-five fifty. And then the next phase is based on the loading of eighteen hundred. We don't want to see twelfth street, twenty-five fifty or eighteen hundred a, after the bridges are built over the river. We don't want to see those go into greater than a three-lane road until each of those roads have hit the level service C capacity, right? We don't want to be, we don't want to have to have a five to seven lane road on twelfth street or twenty-five fifty with, and not have any kind of traffic load on, for example, eighteen hundred south.
So are you saying they all have to hit that? What if, what if two of those roads are worse than that? And one is they're just because people don't take that road? I don't want to wait for the last one to have to trigger.
Yeah.
To do it. So I would almost say, gosh, as soon as the first one, they all, I don't know.
It is our option. So we're not saying that we won't make things happen until X, Y, Z happens. Uh, we're saying that they have to make things happen when certain things trigger. So if, for example, you do get twelfth street really overloaded and overburdened, but we do have twenty-five fifty installed and we do have uh, but we do have twenty-five fifty installed and we do have eighteen hundred installed, but all the traffic's still on Twel- on Twelfth Street for some reason. Um, we still have the controls in the way the development agreement is written to say, hey, we need improvements on Twelfth Street. So we're not limiting our ability to make improvements on those streets. We're limiting, uh, we're requiring, um, them to put in improvements based off of, um, those spaces, those phase sequences. Does that make sense?
It's translucent.
Okay.
So question, Charlie, so when you say that would be their requirement, how, but they don't own the dirt right now for twenty-five fifty or eighteen hundred. How do we then force them to do that? So are you, are, are the development rights or I'm going to call it permits tied to that?
They are.
So once it, once we hit that threshold, they come in and say, okay, I've got, I just sold this, uh, new subdivision to this great group out of California. They want to come in tomorrow and start two thousand homes. And, but we don't, we've now just reached our capacity on Twelfth Street. Now what you didn't tell them?
We're going to tell them they don't get any more permits until.
Right. Is that how you understand it?
Correct.
Okay?
Yep, that's right.
And to add to that a little bit, what we had is we had Hales, our engineer, our traffic engineer, we had Hales go in and do basically a breakdown of the unit counts that they expect each level of service to be, uh, improved. And so, and then from there, we can take that table of improvements, so to speak, at those different unit counts, and it can be kind of a cafeteria plan to where the county and us can decide which improvements are going to solve what the traffic study for the new phases are going to be. You know, so the impact of each phase will have to be evaluated from a traffic scenario. And then we can go in and say, well, traffic on Twelfth Street is a little worse than we thought. Let's go ahead and jump down to, to, on the table to number five, and we'll do number five a little out of sequence and get the level of service back up on Twelfth Street. And then that'll go into the minutes of the approval for that phase. And then we'll have to do that before we can get any permits. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So we kind of did it with a, a table of expectations, so to speak, and then we can tailor that as, as the need develops.
Well, you've got basically phases, you've got that certain number of density units on each phase. So you can shift from a, your California friends, two thousand to, uh, maybe somebody local with three hundred homes.
We could, yeah.
Is that correct?
Yeah. Yeah, depending, yeah, depending on, uh, well, yeah, just the way Cameron, uh, explained it, it's a buffet style. We can, we can move around, obviously counties involved to.
Okay, makes sense.
Yeah.
So how are we dealing with the tracks? I E railroad tracks.
So that's why we're focused on river bridges right now.
Okay.
Uh, right now, the only way to get into the project is seventy-five hundred west.
Right.
Um, we do know we've got some preliminary information from, uh, railroad folks that say that seventy-five hundred can handle a certain amount of traffic. But we don't want that to be the only way in and out. We don't want to overburden that crossing. So we do know that they will probably need to make some improvements to that crossing, add, add some, uh, metric or trigger that UDOT and the railroad can call on, but we want to see that bridge either on twenty-five hundred, twenty-five fifty, excuse me, or on eighteen hundred.
Across the river.
Across the river. Yep, and that'll turn into a primary point of, of ingress egress. My goal, my hope, um, is if the traffic patterns turn out the way that we think they will, um, it's not going to, Twelfth Street, uh, loading isn't going to matter very much because twenty-five fifty will be installed and that'll be the primary way in and out of this project, uh, very soon. Uh, I would venture a guess before it even hits phase two, that'll be the primary way in and out.
Yeah.
Um, it'll also provide, uh, emergency ingress and egress. You've got a fire station over at twenty-two hundred, uh, twenty-two hundred south and is that what thirty-five hundred west or so? You've also got a fire station going in just north of this project on the north side of the track. So you've got a railroad tracks and that's in the way. Um, but you've got some, uh, pretty decent access if we've got access going over the river. Long term, as far as the railroad tracks go, we want to see a bridge going over seventy-one hundred, seventy-five hundred, um, sixty-seven hundred, fifty-nine hundred, um, as well as where that future highway corridor, whether it's a county highway or, or a UDOT highway. We want to see bridges going over the railroad tracks in each of those locations. Um, we will be looking to these guys as far as that highway corridor goes to, um, anticipate, uh, that bridge. Um, but as far as those other roads go, we're asking these guys to reserve the space for bridges. And then we'll be looking at impact fees or long-term, uh, financial, uh, investments to try and get those bridges over the, the railroad. Um, in those cases, what I'd really like to see is I'd like to see a reinvestment fund of some sort so that we can at least get pedestrian bridges over the railroad and over the, the river and in frequent locations. Um, but, but, you know, the, the funding is going to be determined, uh, in the long run for all that. So we're hoping for a lot of ways to get across the railroad and a lot of ways to get across the river in the long run. That's, that's a stable in your general plan is to try and break down those natural physical barriers that are in your community.
Well, you talk about the traffic load on Twelfth Street. I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
You talked about the traffic load on Twelfth Street, but that's, to me, that's just not going to happen until when that, until that first bridge is built. Then, then that's going to trigger that.
Yep. Mm-hmm. I think you're right.
Commissioners. Um, I'm, I'm submitted a proposal to the inland port this past weekend. And I go before they're bored in a week. They have, uh, agreed to, uh, let us apply for a P A D to put that, uh, eight, the eighty-three hundred bridge, railroad bridge in. And it would come out of tax implement from the inland port project area.
Eighty-three?
Three hundred. It would service the.
Across the railroad.
Across the railroad. And I, and I go before they're bored, uh, next weekend, uh, next Friday.
Okay.
To see it. So that's, we've got that piece working within the port. So that would hopefully divert most of the truck traffic that way.
It takes care of, obviously, some issues. So remind me though, Charlie, I thought at one time we, as we had discussions with the railroad out there.
Mm-hmm.
They said there's a very limited number of additional residents that they would allow to cross that before they shut the whole thing down. Am I thinking right? This is a bad dream I had.
Of course you're thinking right.
Exactly right.
So, I mean, they, they did, they just basically said, hey, if we get, we get so much traffic, we're going to shut it down.
Yep.
So seventy-five goes away.
Yeah, so.
We've talked to, we. So, yeah, we, so we've had several conversations with Union Pacific specifically about that seventy-five hundred west. And, and so with them and understanding what that number looks like, which was largely dependent on the traffic study that we did. So we did a traffic study, presented it to them, they agreed to a certain amount of numbers of units before the crossing would need to be improved. And this is where they told us.
Okay.
Just so that you realize, they told us the improvement to that crossing is probably not going to happen, which means you better figure out a different way. So we, so we, we're on the same page.
All right, so Rick, Charlie, I just want to make sure in any development agreement that the burden of that railroad is clearly a liability of the developers, not the county.
Correct.
Because the first thing's going to happen is you know what? They're going to come back and say, county fixer.
Yeah.
I don't want the county to fix it.
Yeah.
It's not our problem.
Yeah, for sure.
So you guys understand that?
We do. Yeah, we've accepted that.
Yeah, and phase by phase, our, our entitlements phase by phase are going to be contingent upon the traffic impact and the level of service that each of those roads and crossings is currently at. So.
All right. All right.
I think a good development agreement has metrics and it has triggers, measurables and thresholds. So once we get in there, we know what that threshold is. We say, this is a trigger. Um, developer, your permits are going to dry up if you're not fixing this problem.
Yeah.
Um, and then they go fix that problem. Uh, as far as seventy-five hundred west goes, our approach with the railroad has been that twenty-five fifty or eighteen hundred are going to be the primary entrances until, until and unless that highway is built, the primary entrances into this project long term, which means that it's actually hopefully going to reduce the impact on seventy-five hundred, not increase it overall.
That's right.
So that's been our overall approach with the railroad so far to let us know that we're not planning on increasing, we're planning on decreasing.
Railroad like that. Hey, Commissioner Harvey.
That, that really depends on how many people live out there are going to go to work to the north or to the south.
That's absolutely.
Less. Or, or. Or to the, yeah, okay.
And that's why the eighty-four, the eighty-three hundred west bridges will be so important.
Well, that'll also be the develop, that'll also depend on what the inland port does and how that, all that goes, you know?
Yep.
So that.
Exactly.
There's a, there's a lot to it. I've got one other comment.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I don't want to see, uh, any landowner along that shoreline hurt, uh, for property rights. But I would like to see a buffer zone. Uh, we've talked about that. I would like to see that other, uh, three hundred feet in there, uh, somehow purchased, uh, by a combination of private, uh, whether it's the state, the private, I realize that that this developer has gone to them in advance of that and said, hey, can we work with you? And how the state handled that was not good. But I, I would like to see, I, I realize that the numbers support, uh, it doesn't affect the water foul, but it does, that other three hundred feet would have impact on the upland game birds. We don't, we don't get that back ever. And so I, I just, I'm, uh, that's a pretty hard line for me right now. I'm just, uh, and I haven't hunted, I need to just, I am sympathy, sympathetic to hunting, but I haven't hunted those lines for I have forty years. So.
In our meeting next Monday, we'll be talking about open spaces and buffers. Um, so we'll, we'll be able to get into a little bit more detail on.
Well, just so everybody knows, that's where I'm at right now. So how that goes together.
We've got a, we'll have a meeting with Hinckins and Chu.
Yep.
Who run natural resources.
Yep.
So we'll have that discussion probably in the next month, if not before.
I think so.
Awesome, awesome.
Uh, I like those meetings to have before this is on formal commission agenda, but that's got to be worked out. I really do think that's going to matter about the whole thing out there. Not that it, you're adversely impacted, but I thi- I think it, it'd be fair, I, we just won't get, we'll never get that back ever.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, we'll go into a little bit more detail on the way it's going to work out next week. Um, on the screen right now, you've got, um, side-by-side comparison of the general plan, uh, versus what the, uh, applicant is asking for. Uh, when the general plan was created, uh, out west, um, this was, this project was anticipated in that general plan. Now you'll see there's a little bit more park area, open space area. Um, on the right-hand side where you see that blue form base, that form base is the mixed use, uh, form-based zone that we have adopted. If you look on the, um, uh, left-hand side, that darker, uh, red and the lighter red, um, was anticipated for those form-based village areas. So you can kind of see how they line, align, um, with the way that the plan was put together. Um, the other thing you could see is based on the shading of those colors, starting with the light, light yellow on the, uh, if you're looking at the, um, right-hand side, uh, the light, light yellow over on seventy-five hundred, those are close to third acre lots. And then as you progress to the east, you can see them getting a little darker, darker, darker until you get to the form base. That represents the, um, transition of density from, uh, uh, west to east in this project. So you'll see a lot less density, uh, out there on seventy-five hundred, and it'll slowly increase, uh, with those zones as you get towards the form base. Uh, we see, sorry, I'm just trying to bounce through. This was the presentation we gave to the planning.
Go back one, will you? One more right there. Okay.
So that's the road infrastructure, uh, plan for internal roads. See. So dancing transition.
And where's, don't know where the town center is.
So it is that lighter blue color.
It's got that, uh, circle around it right there.
Okay. Got it.
Yeah, so we got a couple of village centers, but yeah, the town center is right there in that middle there. Now you see the S curve, uh, on sixteen hundred and, and eighteen hundred streets, this one right here.
Yeah.
Seen my mouse, oh, you can't send that very well.
Yeah.
Um, they've actually committed to the planning commission that that'll just be a straight, great shot on eighteen hundred instead of on sixteen hundred.
Okay.
So they'll, they'll take the curve out.
Okay. You okay with that, Andrew?
We do know just based off of floodplain, that lighter blue, that is within a hundred year flood event. And so that lighter blue area, they've got a lot of, uh, wow. mitigation that they're going to need to do with the federal government. We are the floodplain administrators, so there'll be so many applications through us for letters of map revision with FEMA. Um, but they do intend on doing some mass earth movement out here to make those adjustments in a way that does not move water onto the west side.
Hmm. Was that on floodplain to the east? The head blue?
Mm-hmm. It's a bar. Yeah, yep, that's all floodplain out there, which, good and bad, um, we've had some developers expressed a lot of interest in some possibilities out there on the, um, east of the river. Um, the fact that it's in floodplain doesn't seem to make them blush. Uh, they're willing to work with the federal government as well to, uh, make whatever adjustments they need to. One of the reasons the floodplain looks like it does is because there just has not been a ton of, um, floodplain improvements, um, done out here. It's just been farmed. And, uh, every hundred years or so, you get something that washes out the farms and they got to go redo and start over again, but, um, so there hasn't been a huge reason or impetus to do flood, uh, proofing in the area. Now we've got developers interested, and so I think we'll see a lot, lot more of that happening. Traffic mitigation. Better, yeah.
You're okay, we see it.
Yeah, we got it. The S curve goes away.
Yep, so, um, there we go. So we got, um, internal traffic mitigation, then you got external traffic mitigation. This is, um, this is out to the, uh, freeway, you can see the freeway on the, uh,
Right there.
right-hand side over here. So what we have in the development agreement is that we are going to be expecting at these major nodes, um, some significant investment, um, based on their traffic loading. So we'll be counting how many units come and go from their project. And we'll, um, do the math and figure out at each of those intersections, uh, what improvements are directly related and proportionate to this project. One thing we don't want to do is we don't want to create a situation where the taxpayers are paying for road improvements because we've had growth happen. So this is a more comprehensive approach, uh, regional, uh, uh, area-wide approach as opposed to just looking at boundaries in. One of the things I've expressed to these guys, uh, is, is, um, a big, um, uh, what's the word? A nuisance or annoyance on my side of things when it comes to development is knowing that my tax dollars and your tax dollars go into a big fund that the state spends to build highways that, uh, go to new development as opposed to, uh, developers paying for access to the new land that they're going to develop. So this, these developers have, have agreed to, um, uh, pay for their proportionate share of improvements.
Okay.
Okay, with that in mind, um, looking at, uh.
Charlie, you go by then clicks, you couldn't click, click, I can't read that fast.
Well, I, I was only going, trying to get to every other, uh, slide as it is. So we're looking at a thirty and fifty year build out. If you look at thirty to fifty years, you're, you're, and you do an average across the board of thirteen thousand two hundred, you're looking at two hundred and sixty-four to four hundred and forty dwelling units per year. So the number is big, but so is the time. Um, two sixty-four to four forty is, is nothing compared to what we're, we're currently permitting as, as it stands. Um, and when you look at one point two million square feet of commercial floor area, um, one super Walmart is a hundred thousand square feet. So, um, we're, we're looking at, uh, a handful of Walmarts, uh, out there. So it's really not a significant amount of commercial floor area today. And the market may change over time and that may shift, but, um, they'll be coming to talk to us, uh, before that happens. A phasing based on traffic demand and, uh, I'll get you to something. Oh, so we got land is being reserved for, uh, a potential freeway or that highway that we've been talking about. Um, uh, land is being reserved for a byway, uh, to go out to the port. Um, and then land is being reserved for transit railroad overpasses and for Weaver River quarter preservation. Lots of parks, open space, recreation, uh, working with the Parks District out there. Um, this project is a little bit different. We'll talk a little bit more about parks and open space next week, but, uh, it's a little bit different than other projects I've worked on. These, the developers are, are very interested in making sure that their parks and open space are useful, groomed, maintained for the benefit of their community. Um, so much so that you, what they do down in Vineyard is they create parks. They're public parks, they're donated to the public entity, but they've got an agreement with, with the public agency down there, the Vineyard City, to operate and maintain those parks using H O A funds. So it's a, it's a pretty sweet deal, um, for those projects. I'm a dark sky, uh, quarter preservation. Okay. So that was a, a good component of the presentation we gave to the planning commission. Um, pull up this map here. Come on. So if I take Google Earth and I overlay their, oh, their plans, that blue boundary, that's where their intended phase one is. The purple magenta boundary, that's where their intended phase two is right now as it stands. Um, that, those are the only two phases that they have, um, contemplated from a, a build-out perspective, uh, given what the market is, uh, is doing and can do. Uh, given what the market is, uh, is doing and can do, and given what we're asking for from them in terms of street. Infrastructure improvement. So you could see, it goes down to the river on the east side, it goes over seventy five hundred on the west side. Um, after phase two, that um, just depends on how the traffic load is coming in on uh, eighteen hundred and twenty five fifty. What the market is demanding at that time, so phase two, what are we, ten years out? Probably more than ten years out.
Probably up ten years.
Phase one and two, what's your density um?
Total?
Yeah, twenty five hundred. So for the next ten years, we're talking about twenty five hundred units. Um, after that, that's when we get start. Have to get really serious about um, street improvements, um, and that's when. Um, some bigger improvements from a floodplain perspective are gonna be needed to, to continue to build northward. But. We've got, because of the way they're phasing, we've got those triggers and the metrics built into the proposed development agreement that says. Um, you've got to have a certain amount of the block filled out, you've got to have streets that are going in the right direction. So as they sell to sub developers, any one of these blocks or, or multiples of these blocks. We don't want to see partial streets going out to the middle of nowhere and then ending, and then having no market to finish. We want to make sure that things are logically planned out, logically built out in these street blocks that they've shown here. Not, they don't have to be exactly the street block, we do carve out a little space, uh, plus or minus a few hundred feet. Um, in the development agreement for those roads to be shifted here and there, but we just wanted to make sure that as the density comes in. We're um, being respectful um, and observant of the impacts that are being created. And we want to make sure that their building permits are tied to those impacts. They've got to mitigate the impacts so that the taxpayer of today. And the taxpayer who are outside of this project of the future are not paying for the impacts of this.
Where's the city center on there?
Um, that's intended.
In that, in that light blue?
Yep, yep, right here.
And right above that, Mr., right above that circle is one of the track stations, yep, right there. And the other ones to the left, there you go.
Where's the drone port station?
I was just gonna say, either one of those stops are large enough from an acreage perspective. That we can absolutely incorporate something technologically advanced such as that, easily, easily.
Good, and this is gonna be called. Andrew. Pearl or?
Andrew Farms, Andrew Farms.
No, it's gotta be a city, there's gonna be a city name out there, Cameron, Cameronville or what?
I, that, I voted for that. What I want to do.
Vetoed.
I want to put one of those water tanks above ground, you know, the ones that you see back east?
Yeah.
With big old picture of Cameron. That's what I want.
We don't want to scare anybody away though.
Like it.
Okay, Charlie, what else?
Any questions for you guys for us as far as?
So what are you looking for us today? Is this informational only?
Informational, any questions and in, in, you know, input that we can provide, you know, Charlie always does a great job.
Andrew, anything you need to add to this?
Yes, it's cool.
Well, folks, dang. Okay, so. Couple of things, let me just add to this. Um. In past conversations with the gentleman by the name of Gary Herbert, who happened to be a governor.
I know.
As we got into debates on legislation, we both agreed, the market will drive. The market, not necessarily what we do here today. And then another. Governor that we currently know by the name of Spencer Cox, conversation with him said, and I've told you this before. Good infrastructure drives good development. I believe both those concepts exist today. Now. Um, I like Charlie, what you've done here, I like the. The step approach, that concerns me, I mean, that concerned me before, again, water and sewer. Are they either solved or they're not? That comes down to the infrastructure, okay? So I'm not to be worried about that. What I look about is, okay, is this a good spot, good location? For the citizens of this county to put residential and commercial development on. As I, I was out there, I had boots on the ground, just on the other side of that river, looked across the river and saw your piece. And I still go back to the concept, look, if we're going to preserve. Any type of agricultural use in this county, then we better start putting homes on ground. That is not that productive right now, that has answers to water and sewer. So I, I'm warming up to the concept here. But I think, I think in the best interest of housing, in the best interest of trying to preserve some type of agriculture, which is not gonna happen. Ever probably, but at least gives us a short timeframe that maybe we can take pressure off of our ag ground and put it on locations like that.
Yeah, I agree, yeah, it is largely unused.
So that's where I'm at. So I, you've answered a lot of my questions as far as this phasing. Uh, as long as. Those kind of the uh, red flags came up that I mentioned, that I just don't want future commissions. To have a potential, well, why didn't those guys think of that?
Yeah.
You know, we had little Jimmy Harvey there, and he should have thought of that, so I just want to make sure.
Right.
That. When this thing gets approved, that there's nothing comes back and said, well, you know. So and so promised me that, or now we want the county to chip in twenty million bucks to fix the problem. I don't want to be any problems. There are, there are problems in development, but guess what? They're your problems to solve, to make sure you take that problem away from the county.
Yeah. Yeah, and as a developer, that was our goal going in. We were asked to think about the challenges with where this is located.
Yeah.
The productivity of the ground was always a consideration, but on top of that, we were asked to. Figure out what it would take to get some of those solutions across the river in both places, across the railroad to the north. And then all of the infrastructure needed to be a benefit to the surrounding community. And we've taken the approach of, if we do this right, and we get enough units that the size of the development can pay for those improvements across the river. Across the railroad track and the improvements to the roads across the property that benefit the Illinois port later. Then that sort of development can really ensure that the rest of Weber County can stay more agriculturally based. And we can plant a good town center here, and then that takes the pressure off and makes sure that everybody else can still farm and do whatever they want to do. The scope of the project is huge, and it's easy to uh. You know, find flaws with projects of this scope. But the thing that we always have to keep in mind is the scope of the project is also gonna be what uh, determines its, its success. So the scope of the project is gonna allow for those crossings across the river, the crossings across the railroad track, the improvements to the infrastructure to get the people in and out of there. And it's also gonna give a town center field to that area that can be a benefit on otherwise unproductive ground that's gonna solve a lot of these other issues. And then the other thing is the time consideration of a project this big can't be understated either. Um, you know, this is a large project, it's gonna take decades to build, it's not gonna happen overnight. And uh, we all know at this table that even the first phase is gonna be. Uh, a pretty big lift, just solving the sewer and water uh, issues on the side alone. And then from there, we've got transportation issues across the river, and we've got floodplain issues, you know, along that river as well. And we, we just have to solve things one by one and make sure we're taking a, a proactive approach to that. The other thing that Charlie's been really diligent about steering us towards is making sure that that. Isn't just a set in stone plan, that we have some flexibility that we can evaluate as we submit a phase. If what we put in the last phase isn't working like we thought it would. And we need to make sure that, you know, it, it is evaluated and, and readjust and do a different improvement the next time, then we can do that phase by phase. But the zoning is gonna allow that, that flexibility and creativity. And then as we go in phase by phase, we can take another look at, hey, is twelfth street working well still, or do we need to do some additional improvements there? Or do we need to put in another bridge and make sure that that's gonna work? Um, and so that, that way the development agreement allows us that flexibility to make sure it's working properly instead of just set in stone, you have to do this, this and this. So I think the development agreement in this case is gonna give. A pretty good framework for the developer and the county to work together to, to make sure that what we put on the ground is actually gonna work to the benefit of that area.
Good.
Yeah, it's been a pleasure working with staff uh, on, on that development agreement to allow that flexibility.
Yeah, gotta be flexible, again, the market drives it.
That's right.
The other key component here that makes sense, I think, was, makes this timely is uh, the extension of North Legacy. That we'll be starting that study fairly soon here.
Right.
So this becomes a very important information, to locate North Legacy where.
Agreed.
Where the people are.
Agreed.
Commissioners, there's one more component to this that I think you'll appreciate. Um, a lot of times when we're working with development agreements, developers want to say. We want to know exactly what we're getting for the duration of the entire project, so we want to freeze all zoning, all rules, all laws. As it pertains to development for our project. A lot of development agreements do that, a lot of developers want to look for that. Uh, we've been working hard with this developer as well as with our other developers on our, our template development agreement to say that's. That's not how we're gonna do it if we're looking at thirty to fifty year projects. What we're gonna do is we're gonna tell you, uh, we'll get, we'll get you vested in density, because that's usually what the financiers want to see when it comes to going to get the funding and lending taken care of. We'll vest you in a layout, we'll vest you in essentially a, a, a legacy as far as um, long term configuration goes, as long as utilities go. But we still are driving, the commissioners are still driving the, the vehicle here. We're still gonna be able to adopt rules and, and ordinances and be responsive to the market, be responsive to the requests of developers and make adjustments as far as those laws go. Um, you're just getting your package, you're getting your density, you're getting your layout, you're getting your configurations. We'll figure out how to govern the rest of it as time goes on and as things change. So it gives you guys a lot of opportunity as well as successive commissioners, a lot of opportunity. They do look back and say, who was here at the time, who made that decision? They can make shifts in those kinds of decisions at that time, they're not so locked in that can't, um, but they're stuck, basically.
That's a good component, I like it a lot.
Yep, great.
Okay, anything else, Charlie?
That's it.
Commissioner Harvey, thanks for being with us.
Yes, thanks.
See you guys next week.
Must have been pretty exciting, I got like fifteen guys asking me to call them.
Who, Gary? My sheet. Uh, or maybe right now.
Yeah.
Opioid.
That's what we're talking about.
I got one right here, I got an opioid receipt. Want to share with me?
Yeah, that's what I looked at earlier, but.
Well, you know, you'll find I've fairly prepared.
Yeah, mine, I've got some notes on it.
Okay, me too.
I'm waiting for a minute.
Let's do it, I'm gonna grab a sheet.
Thanks, Fisher.
Charlie? This is big.
Yeah, big project, not, not a lot of other big projects like this.
Then well, this will be it.
Saratoga Springs, Eagle Mountain, they all started kind of, kind of like this. So we'll see a whole city at some point, I'm sure.
Yeah. Gentlemen, how are you? Just dry, nice to see you.
How's it going?
Nice to see you.
You too.
Dallas. Price. Fancy backpack.
Yeah.
Nice haircut. It's a void. At a boy, yeah.
Jim, how are you?
Good.
Tim Page, how are you? Good, how are you guys doing?
Good, well. You know, I used to hate them bush haircuts, I love them now.
I do too.
I've got to get the name of your barber.
Yeah, I was thinking, I was gonna give you the name of my, one of, why, why they put those beads in the hair for the summertime? You're kind of looking like a hippie.
Well, you know, I wasn't a bad generation.
No, man.
You, I'm the only one of all my friends that have any hair left, and so my wife keeps telling me I need to blow it out longer to make them all.
That's what I hear as well, do that, your hair out.
Yep, all right, welcome, sorry, we're running just a little behind schedule. Uh, got a little carried away with the last one, let's move on to our next agenda item. Which is a discussion regarding opioid funds with Weber Human Services. Lenell's here with us. Chris Crockett is. Come on up here, Chris, Scott Park, Kevin Eastman, Jed Burton. Okay, and we'll get to Weaver Park and Health on the next agenda item, Brian, just so you know, that works. All right, Lenell, you're first.
Well, so we met with the commissioners a couple of weeks ago, and they had some questions on these two proposals, and. We didn't know the answers, we were like, do you want us to bring these guys in so they can answer the questions? And they said yes, and it was really. Smisher Balls, I think, had the majority of questions, and she's sort of female of the day. So that's kind of where we're at, to present your proposal again to the commissioners, let them understand. Exactly where you're at on it, and we're just getting it finalized so we can have those funding agreements, Chris?
The one with, if we wanted to go with Weber Human Services. Uh, first was the one point five million, um, and the majority of that was going to go towards the um. The facility. And the question that um, you had raised before. Um, was regarding the timing of reimbursement and the funds.
Yeah, when the con, sorry, I mean, yes, please. Um, when the contract came back, I thought I remembered that we were gonna front the money on the planning and the architectural drawings. And then if for any reason. We didn't go through with the project, the county wouldn't have spent any money. But that if we did then go through and, and build it, then we get reimbursed for all the planning stuff as well.
Yeah, and when we had written up the contract and uh. After talking with Scott, and I must, I may, I, I may have remembered it incorrectly, is that we were thinking about doing it after. Um, to reverse actual construction costs. As far as whether it's qualified, I think it's under, I, I, uh, qualified under both. Legally, I don't, it doesn't matter to me.
Yeah.
Um, but I, we just wanted to bring this to the commission.
Yeah, that was the only thing in the contract that I saw was different, um, and that was the only question I had, is just that. We, we, our understanding was that we would get reimbursed for all the planning, all the architectural drawings if we built it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think it was stated like that in the contract.
No, the way it was stated was for um.
That's, that's just, uh, to bear that cost.
Right, yeah, and so it would just be allowing you to recoup it.
Yes.
Earlier, but it would, there would still be a guarantee that the project was.
Has to be built.
Has to be.
Yeah, it has to be built in order for us to reimburse, get reimbursed, yeah.
Um, Scott, did you?
Can I just say, from, from finances perspective, it doesn't matter, I mean, if it's a million dollars or a million plus. I don't really care whether you use it for planning or architect or construction, I just care that. We get a building permit from Ogden City and we actually don't incur a bunch of expenses, reimburse you for expenses and the building doesn't go anywhere, so I think that's why. Maybe that was where the misunderstanding came in is, we want to make sure that you're through that process.
Yeah.
Um, and so as soon as you get the shovel on the ground and start digging, I, I know, it doesn't matter to me what the money goes towards, it's all allowable. We just want to make sure, as long as that, you know, we don't start spending any money until the shovel goes in the ground, we've got all the building permits all the way through and we don't get.
Yeah, and we're fine, we're absolutely fine with that, yeah. We, I don't think, not even about the timing of the reimbursement, it's just that it would get reimbursed.
Grant us a couple of questions then, so just going through this preliminary agreement. It says. The project forwarded by the following interlocal agreement for each proposal, we don't have an interlocal yet.
So the agreements right here are right here, we've drafted the agreement.
Okay, we haven't seen those yet, though.
No, we've sent them to Weber Human Services and we sent them to the health department, and then we brought them last week, but we're gonna be negotiating the final terms with you today.
Okay.
And so I have those if you'd like, and we can pull them up on the screen as well.
All right, well, we may need to sit in separate time, but just, I wanted to make everybody aware that still subject to interlocal being agreed to. Uh, so, and I don't, yeah, again, I'm with Scott, if. We, if we know we have a building project, the question I have is you've got an employee here of a hundred and fifty thousand a year. Do you need somebody else? And, because you've got, so it's five hundred thousand a year, hundred and fifty thousand of that goes to a new employee. Why do you need new employee?
That's, that's true.
Yeah, it's a different project, it's, so we have, we, we provide medication assisted treatment at our main building. We have about three hundred and fifty issue participate in that medication assist, uh, assisted treatment. We also have about ninety of those three fifty who just come and get the medication, but they don't participate in treatment, they opt out of treatment. Well, their best option for success is to participate in both therapy and medication. So what we're trying to do is house a therapist in our medical clinic that, that gives a medication assisted treatment or the, the medication. So that they can engage those ninety clients that opt out of therapy.
Yeah.
And, and that's why, so a hundred and fifty thousand is, you're gonna take about a third of that, a little bit more than that for benefits. And so it's just one full time clinician or therapist.
One full time.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so. Uh, we don't know anything about the status of building permits from Ogden City.
No, but again, if the contract states that it'll be reimbursed, I'll do the plans, I'll pay all the architectural fees, we'll get to Ogden City, we'll get that approval first, and then.
So based on the interlocal being signed and approved by the commission, then you start the.
Yeah.
Design, etc.
Yeah, I just thought it, it was word of deep wrong in the contract.
That. Having it, uh, once a building permit is issued, do you think that's the appropriate point in time that would trigger the option to be able to get reimbursed?
Well, I, I'm okay waiting, uh, but that's what you're saying is that you, the, the county wants that guarantee.
Yeah, the county wants the guarantee that the project's going forward, not, and it doesn't get scuttled halfway through, right? So that, that's all I want to make sure is that we have a project that we're.
I'm, I'm okay fronting the money and that can come, whenever it comes, that's not the issue, I just thought the contract stated the contrary.
The contract says that you'll be able to be reimbursed for construction costs. The contract says that you'll be able to be reimbursed for construction costs, so it'd be. You what?
So the ar- architectural fees and all that's included in construction costs. That's why, that's why I wasn't sure.
I can, i- if the commission's okay with me modifying it to include that, I'm happy to do that, it doesn't matter to me, it's a qualified expense.
It's, I think, I think, my main, my main question is, so, you've got basically a million fifty in here for building. What happens if your bid comes in at a million five? Which very well could happen today's market.
It probably will.
It'd probably come in higher, and that's, I think we talked originally that we would just have to come back and see if you'd still approve it or not.
Or the organization's actually gonna have to put.
But you understand right now, it's basically one fifty and three fifty, and I'm assuming that's what the interlocals are gonna say, right? Chris?
Yeah.
We took a stab in the dark on the cost.
Okay, yeah.
Now, there was some discussion initially that if we built the project. In a year's period of time, whether, rather than waiting three years to get the three hundred and fifty dollars times three. That, that, that money could be given upfront once the project was finished, does that make sense? So instead of waiting three years to get three hundred and fifty each year, if the project's finished in a year, then we would get the one million fifty.
Yeah, we could, we can talk about that as well.
That was all, yeah.
So my last question, then I'm gonna go to Commissioner Harvey, so. How, what benefits is it gonna do under the settlement, so then we don't have any prevention here, it's all treatment? And how, and really what we're talking about here, my mind, is how do we prevent it, instead of. The, the longer we give treatment, the more we gotta treat.
We're partnering and they'll be.
So how, so how do we deal with that?
The Health Department's gonna be presenting our partnership on prevention.
And, and let me just explain on the treatment part, you're right, they're in treatment now, so some of the prevention is, is gone. But treatment is prevention, if we get these individuals in treatment, they're not gonna use more and more and more, recidivism goes down. So that is preventing them from ongoing use, uh, in, during adulthood, this other one for the one full-time employee. We're trying to engage people in therapy and medication management and engage them better. So there, so we have somebody embedded with the clinic, and again, that is prevention of further use, further hospitalization, further incarceration. So again, we partner very closely with prevention, obviously, we, we would wanna prevent the whole episode, but they're already here, so we wanna prevent further episodes.
So we got a partnership that they'll.
I'll stand on, on the prevention side. Good to know, okay, Commissioner Harvey.
No, my, uh, my statement has to do merely, I'm very much at, uh. Prevention. And, uh, I think that lowers treatment down the road, and that's where I'd like to see the focus is, uh.
Okay.
Yep, they're gonna present on that.
Okay, he, he's gonna be on the hot spot just a second, anything else? Lenell, anything from you?
No, I think that's good, so are you using that person now, that hundred and fifty thousand dollar person, have you already?
We've advertised the position, but we have not hired because we're waiting on the funding to be granted.
Okay.
Okay, so just so we're clear, at least I'm clear, is we get permission from Ogden City for the project to go ahead. You'll, once that happens, you'll start the drawings, the engineer, etcetera.
I'll have to do the drawings before, and I'm willing to upfront that cost.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Cause they'll need to see what the facility is.
But, I'm just saying, our experience with Ogden City.
Yeah, I know.
I wanna see that in writing.
Absolutely.
Something that can't be retracted.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Because they're not very friendly as far as.
They don't think I have to do full drawings, but I gotta give them a pretty good concept, yeah.
Well, just beware of that.
Yep.
That concerns me. Okay.
Commissioners, are you okay if, uh, Lenell, Scott and I work with, uh, Kevin and Jed to just open up some flexibility, provide some more clarity on that paragraph?
And Chris, I'm okay, I just didn't realize that construction meant those other things too, that's all, so.
I think if we can, we, we'll just make sure that it suits what you need to get you.
All you gotta do is construction to include drawing.
Like drawings for, uh, things like that.
Great.
Awesome.
Should be a need.
We'll put a couple sentences.
I don't think there's a problem with that. Okay, Commissioner Harvey?
That's good.
You're good, okay. Anything else, gentlemen?
No, I, I have total faith in these guys, we know we're partnering, can we be business?
Okay, you're, yeah, you're done.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
See ya.
Sounds like we're on the same page.
Yeah. I believe Sharon's. Is about this proposal.
It is.
Yep.
Yeah, Sharon left us with some instructions.
Okay, thanks all.
Thanks, all right. We're now back, wow, we're almost on time, that makes me a little nervous.
I'd probably be a lot nervous.
All right, let's now go to the Weaver Maureen Health Department, same topic, opioid funds, we have Lenell with us, Chris Crockett, Scott Park. Bryce Sherwood's here with us, he's in charge of that program of Brian Cowan, so Lenell, start with you again.
Oh, well, we just. Get some questions answered on the proposals, so. Go ahead and present what you.
We're, we're still on the creative side.
Sorry, we're. We love the confidence. Bursting into the room. All right, so I'm gonna go with Bryce or Brian, we're, we'll tag team this one, Commissioner. So we've got, again, your proposal. Um, same scenario, we've gotta get the interlocal put together, have to have commission approval before anything goes anywhere.
Right.
Um, but some questions we have, basically had to do from Commissioner Bolos. She, she questioned the amount of money, um, spent on. Summits, on my, well, basically on these five, sending five people to these seminars, and, and so I guess. What I would like to hear, and I know that she'd like to hear, is number one, why five people, and then what outcomes do you expect? From that, in the way of prevention, wh- what do we get for our dollars, tell me that.
Well, let me, let me start by saying, we, we recognize that this prevention efforts in our community can't all be done by just our organization.
Right.
And these summits, uh, that we're taking people to, that we're, th- these aren't all staff of the Health Department, they're community partners. Uh, and it's helping us build that network of people in our county that can focus on the prevention efforts. Make the referrals, make sure we're, we're reaching the target au- audience in our, in our county and have the biggest impact. So really, it's for us, it's a, it's part of team building with our community partners, um, that, as we approach these summits and. Helping get people in our community trained, uh, on the newest prevention efforts and. And be aware of what's currently happening in our country.
I think it's a certain level of, of people as well, I would, we've invited Commissioner Bolos. Julie Johnson, who has been a part of this committee from the first go, go around, Brian, and. Getting some of those key leaders really in building that infrastructure, cause those positions don't turn over as much as a frontline staff member. So if we're looking at really the eighteen years over this settlement, we need that infrastructure on a county level. And make sure that these things are in place, the understanding is there, the, the data evaluation, everything that way.
Okay, so. Exactly what areas you're gonna hit in term, how do you, how do you increase prevention in this county? By sending people, you say there's a plan out there, what is it?
So, I think there's, there's multiple layers to that. Um, building the network is, is probably the first step for us, is we start to strengthen those relationships. With our partnering agencies, uh, and focusing on developing what's the, the, the best programs for our, for our community. And what, identifying what our needs are and putting, um, really putting a strategic plan together on how we're gonna approach. Opioid prevention, using our department, Weber Human Services, United Way, other community partners that participate in this realm. And building community coalitions. Um, a lot of the training that we've, we are going to, going to, these summits have. Workshops and training on how to, how to build strong, uh, collaborative coalitions. How to use people in the community to help strengthen the message and take that message out to the community. Um, and really how to, how to have the largest impact on our prevention efforts. What, what would you add to that?
I, I think the three proposed summits or conferences are intentional, one's a national conference where we get, Brian and I just went to one. Got to hear from, um, our Health and Human Services Elected Official, Robert Ken, Robert Kennedy Junior. Got to hear from the general, uh, um, that's not right, the District Attorney.
Pamela Bondi.
Pamela Bondi, so you get to hear some of the national perspectives, what science is going on, another one. Is a local one on coalitions and how to build a coalition, which isn't just a group of people, but there's a science, there's models. Uh, that we work on, and then Fall Conference is another one, so those are the three, and that's a local one. The RX, uh, and the Fall Conference have different disciplines represented, so it's not just the prevention, but. There's also law enforcement, there's school involvement and different tracks to help train this infrastructure. Within the county, the other part, that these funds help go to, is we look at some of the proposed activities. Working with our law enforcement and, and tracking our overdoses. And then helping them, working with our providers and our prescribers, making sure that when a prescription is administered or given out. That we're not just giving out pills, uh, like crazy, that there's a, a medication plan to it. So again, these, the activities also feed into those summits, that if we have our built infrastructure. Then we can build this, uh, throughout the coalition, which is a lot of what this will do, it's our super team. Substance use prevention, emergency response, we have law enforcement, school, Health Department, Human Services, Medical, both hospitals. We've got a pretty comprehensive tract, and so we have a strategic plan that focuses on all of those pieces. Again, the prescribers, providers, we have something that looks for enforcement, the prevention side that really is the universal. Or primordial stuff that happens when you're in elementary school, working with our families. That's our school component and then also working with, um, uh, just the coalitions. So all of this is built in together, so we're not just doing this over here and that over there. They're all connected in a very intentional purpose or manner.
Yeah, we're really looking for that coordinated effort, okay?
So, talk to me about your personnel, looks like you've got, well, sixty-five thousand there, another sixteen thousand, so you've got. Close to ninety thousand just in personnel, are you hiring new people to do this, how many, how many FTEs are we talking to run this on?
So, they, what it would be is a half-time pers- person. Plus just a few hours from me just being the director over the programs. Uh, within community health, and then an epidemiologist for two hours, so it'd be sixty-five thousand. The first year sixty-six thousand, the next year just with the two percent increase in wages.
So it's.
So that's for half. About a, about a half FTE, yep, a part, part-time person, some administrative costs for that person, and then, uh, uh. Shorter term, couple of hours a week, person.
And that person would run the, be responsible for the program.
There's a state grant also that provides twenty hours, so we'd have a full-time position and braid these fundings together. So we're not dependent on any one piece of funding, we'd have a full-time third person. To help run the state and these settlement dollars to make sure we have a comprehensive approach.
So you are working with the state then?
Yeah.
That was gonna be my next question.
Yeah, uh, Commissioner Forre, that's one of the, the disadvantages of some of the grant-funded positions we have over at the Health Department, is if that grant funding. Dries up, then we, we don't have the resources to maintain that employee, so our strategy at the Health Department has been to find several different funding streams.
Yep.
To support our grant-funded positions, and this is one of those examples where we would combine closely related programs, closely related grant. Objectives and try to get that work well completed with multiple funding sources.
Got it.
May I ask, are these all gonna be new services, we're not, these aren't already existing in your budget and we're just using the funds to, um. You know, fill in that budget, the, the only reason, there's a statute that prohibits us from doing that, it has to be.
Be supplanting anything.
Okay.
Uh, in that way, it would be braided and coordinated, but we wouldn't be supplanting and paying for this out of a different pocket, we. Walk that very carefully, so a lot of these would, if it was paid over here with the state grant, we would shift it and only do here. We would not do- duplicate or double report.
Exactly.
And yeah, that's what you're asking.
Yeah, is that satisfactory, Scott, in some words?
Yep. All right, so tell me what the subcontractor does.
So the subcontractor, uh, would be an evaluator, I think. We're hearing this nationally, statewide, and then also locally here. That we need to make sure that we're doing things in a way that is showing a difference, that down, three years down the road, which is what we've been. Asked, or we've asked for from the commission, that we can come back and say we've made a difference, so the evaluators track, tracking all of the. The metrics, all of the things that we're doing, the surveys, the responses, that we're showing a difference. From what we do today to three years down the road and hopefully eighteen years down the road. Also, uh, there's some of the things that we're gonna be doing, some listening sessions or focus groups. Wanna make sure that we're asking questions that aren't leading, that we're doing things according to the science. And it's just to help us make sure that we're evaluating everything along the way, so you can feel comfortable going back to your state. People and saying, we've made a difference as well.
That's very important, so.
As long as there, sorry.
Don't go ahead.
As long as there's a, uh. A metric that shows here to here.
Yeah.
I, I, very much is what the Kevin Eastman and Jed were talking about, outcome-based performance.
Right.
Outcome-based is really important to me.
I love it, so ta- talk to me about your hundred thousand for positive messaging.
Commissioners, that was so- something in a few meetings, uh, well, a couple ones about with meeting with Commissioner Bolos, that it was agreed to take that out, and so the request is just. For the first, uh, portion, the five hundred and ninety-seven thousand.
So tell me the amount again.
Was it five hundred and thirty-seven?
Same.
Total.
So take three hundred thousand off for that.
Seven, four eighty-one.
Yeah, which we have a signed agreement already, um, encompassing that, but without the commissioner's signature, it's already gone to the Health Department for review.
Okay, so the positive messaging comes out.
It, it, of course, the commissioners, that you could put that in if it's, that's a decision up to, up to you.
Now, and so, so give me the total amount then each year, what's that changed to, is it the same amount per year?
So for just the super team, the things we were talking about earlier, it'd be about one seventy-eight a year, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand. Jumping up about two percent, one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, and then one hundred and eighty thousand.
Okay, so take, so basically scratch off three hundred thousand, is that correct? Okay, um, all right, well, I think, that's, and I agree a hundred percent with Commissioner Harvey, now my, my next question was gonna be. How do we measure results, or, as I said right here on my sheet, outcomes? Um, and I guess my only point is, if your evaluator's gonna do that. But quite frankly, my position is I don't wanna wait three years, I wanna make sure that's in our interlocal. That we have six months, uh, annual reports as far as progress being made. Because as far as I'm concerned, if we can't show outcomes, if we can't show progress being made, we've got other places to put this money.
Sure.
So, I just wanna make sure you understand, that this is not gonna be a grant that three years from now you come back and say renew it. I, I, I'd like to do a six-month yearly review for this amount of money, and just.
I'm, if you can, uh, that, I, I think that'd be good, then you'd be able to show the metrics, I think that'd be great.
Uh, and if nothing else, if it's six months, you come back and say, this is what we're working on, but I'm not gonna go three years and then. Have somebody come back and say, nothing happened in the community, what did you guys do, you know, allocating, you know, one point five million. Uh, three million dollars to this, that there hasn't been a change, in fact, the change has been, there's been an increase, in opioid use.
Yeah.
Which I don't wanna see.
No, I appreciate that perspective, Commissioner, and, and we're well aware of, of that in the prevention side of things, it's a difficulty we struggle with and. And demonstrating the, the, the benefits of the efforts that we make, but, uh, we're also experienced in. Putting that information together and reporting on a regular basis through a number of our grants, so, you know, adding that to us, I think.
Yeah.
To this agreement is, is really workable for.
I think it's just a twenty or thirty minute conversation, hey, here's what we've done, here's what appears to be working, here's who we're working with, and, uh. I've actually got a conversation with Luke Raspussen tomorrow, you know, the more that I kinda step into this world, the more I talk to people at the state. This program has to be started in elementary, junior high, high schools.
Yeah.
To do any type of prevention, if it gets to this stage.
Agreed.
Then it's all about treatment.
Agreed.
And that's where, that's where I lose it, because this is about prevention.
Yeah.
It's not about taking people off the street and, you know, trying to rehabilitate them, even, I mean, we still have to do that. But if we can stop one person from starting there, the amount of money it saves us in the, down the road. That's beneficial.
But do you know Chad Carpenter? He's the super assistant superintendent under Luke.
Okay.
He sits on this super team, he's a part of this, all of what we're doing.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm glad to hear that, I'm not.
Uh, that's, as we look at our, our strategic efforts and in approaching this in our community, we recognize that prevention starts early.
Yeah.
Schools are a big part of that, but we've also learned through the years that schools can't do all of that for us, and that's really what uh. Kind of emphasizes to us the need to have other community partners available and working with us in this process so that where. We can't uh, you know, interact with, with kids as they're going through school, we have other resources and opportunities to do other outreach as well.
No, that's great. I mean, I'm not telling you how to do your business because it's a, you know, I, I don't claim to have any of the answers, but. We ha- if we don't start asking the right questions, we're never gonna get there. Um, so I just think we need to look at that and obviously we've got our partner with United Way, that Vanel's working with, with these nonprofits. So, yeah, it's, I agree, it's bringing a whole collaboration of. Different groups, different people together to kind of brainstorm to see where you go, right?
But even at that, I look at this and I say, these three basically spend every cent we get from opioid funds in a year. So if we were to stay at this every year.
Yeah.
You know, or is that the biggest thing for our buck too? I mean, we've gotta look at that. Now granted, I don't think Weber Human Services wants to get their building. You know, they're not gonna need three hundred and fifty thousand a year, but you know, we hear the sheriff saying he wants money, I don't know if he'll get it or not. But if he does, that's gonna come out of this pot of twenty million, you know? That's, so we're all in it together to try to figure out what is the best, most effective way to spend this money.
Yeah.
You know?
The Health Officers Association has been speaking with our state legislature um over the last few years about this opioid funding. And kind of a, a, a proposal or an outline of how we think the funding should be spent in the beginning of, of. High emphasis, emphasis on prevention, just for the reasons Jed discussed. Is we're, we're addressing that program, you know, people in that room, treatment, sorry, yeah, treatment is, uh, and then. Gradually over time, as we see the effectiveness of the treatment, we're spending more resources on the prevention side that we, so that we can work. These two things together and direct the funding in the streams that, that have the most impact. Cause if our treatment, if we have a high investment right now on the treatment side and that's effective, that just can reduce. Our opioid use, right? But we have to also be working the prevention side at the same time, so we're not adding more people. And if, and over time, if our efforts are effective, we'll see that transition and we should have less of a demand on treatment. More opportunity for prevention and further reduce the problem in our community.
Yeah, cause I keep going back to you guys' statistics, which are great. I love getting those updated ones. Thanks Bryce for doing that, but. I mean, nearly all ninety percent of all those who were admitted in Weber County for substance use disorder treatment. In twenty twenty-four reported they had first used drugs other than alcohol before the age of eighteen, you know? I mean, when you start reading the statistics and then less than half of those that are admitted into treatment programs. Are actually succeeding, you know? So that's where you start looking at those statistics and you're like, man. It seems like we've got to nail it at the prevention, we've got to nail it at the start, not after they're already down there. And I personally have friends that have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on treatment on their kids that. Went back into the use, you know, I mean, there's no surefire way to treat this type of. There, one thing might work for one person, not for another.
Sure.
And so, I mean, it just seems like hitting the prevention side of it is so much more, like from me, who's a layman, who doesn't know. What you guys know, but just looking at what the statistics are pointing to, it's like, we've got to nail that somehow.
Well, I think part of that science suggests it's not the individual only. We have to look at the individual, the family, the community and the. The whole group altogether. And so part of this plan is to not just work on that individual level. But to, to work within all of those spheres of influence for those people. Strength of the community is the individual, strength of the individual is the community, and that's why this is. Put forth the way it is following that science.
Okay, Commissioner Harvey, any last words? Appreciate it, thanks.
Commissioner, are, just to make sure I understand, so we have a yearly reporting requirement in the contract already, October first, it's statute. We have to have a report. If I was understanding correctly, we want to modify the contract to do this every six month report.
Yeah, I'd like.
Maybe just the criteria statute?
Yeah, I just want a six-month update. I don't know, I, obviously the final report, I think is good, but I'd like a six-month update.
We'll work together to help us.
I mean.
We'll, we'll report, not report, but we'll collect data quarterly. So, so we'll have it available if you need it in six months, we'll get it. If it's an annual, if you want it quarterly, we'll have it.
Well, I think that helps you. It's just a time to brainstorm and say, hey, look, it looks like this program is working very well. Can we shift money from this over to here? Uh, you know, just, I think it gives you an opportunity to come to us. And say, okay, this really makes sense. Let's, let's put a little more money on this side and take less over here or, you know, maybe hit. See if we can't have a little more out of the full settlement if it makes sense, but until we know the outcomes, until we know the results. Um, we're, we're just still kind of guessing at this thing.
Right, right.
And so, okay, yeah, so I think we need to do that and then we probably set it, need to set a time to review those inter-locals.
Um, perhaps if we're next Monday, uh, I'll get the signatures and we'll just do one final review with Commissioner Bolos here. And I'll schedule it for an approval on Tuesday.
Perfect. I like it. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Let them know we are ready now.
Then we'll do, well, I can say, just kidding.
Hey Chris, I have a meeting with Commissioner Bolos at eleven to kind of start this meeting, if you want to. Tomorrow.
Oh, yeah.
At eleven.
Yeah, absolutely.
This time it's for real.
This time it's for real.
Alright.
He came in a little more sheepishly this time.
He's confident.
None of this.
Learned our lesson last time.
We sent one guy through.
See, does everybody else have a copy of this?
I have an extra, I know exactly what this is.
Oh, brought Jason, that's not a good sign. Okay.
Means you're good.
Means we're good, alright. Alright, we're now on our next agenda item. Sorry for the delay. Gentlemen, discussion regarding Station sixty-two drain, Gary Meyer. Don Wilkinson, Scott Park, David Reed, Rick Clark, here we go.
Have to excuse Dave, he's.
Dave is not here.
He is gone. So if you remember commissioners, uh, earlier this year. We came to you requesting uh some extra money to help uh the. Build a drain to Station sixty-two. This is up in the Old Town Eden area. We have a project that we just finished up there, which we. Installed some storm drain from the entrance to Eden Acres subdivision down into the, into the Pine View North Fork area. We didn't have enough money to even finish that project, let alone run anything east for, for Station sixty-two. Station sixty-two and. Brick, correct me if I'm speaking out of turn here, but they've kind of got a major drainage issue up there in front of the station.
So I can recap what, what the problem is up there. Um, we have a, a drainage system in our parking lot. But over the years, that road has been built up and now it all drains into our parking lot. So now. It's a way, it overwhelms what we have there, so we have water buildup and during the winter it just ices over, our parking lots all broke up. We want to fix it and we'll fix it on our own, but we want to get that water drainage issue fixed first, so it doesn't overwhelm our, our drainage again. So that's where we're, what we came to you guys asking about.
And until we did our other project, we, we didn't even really have anywhere for him to send the water to, but we do now. So, uh. When we met with you last fall, you said, we'll give us some numbers, so I've got three different bids. Uh, the low bid came from a, ironically, a contractor local to the valley up there, uh, by the name of Accurite Excavating. I don't know if I can say that on the record, but.
Yeah, it is, it is what it is.
Um, I'm sorry, they're gonna be probably repercutting.
The beatings will be good, but they came in at about eighty-seven thousand dollars and, and change, well, eighty-eight, just shy of eighty-eight thousand dollars. Um, significantly cheaper than some of the others and so, um, yeah, wanted to come back to you guys. We have some numbers, we're ready. He's ready to go. We just need your permission and your approval and knowing where the funds are gonna come from.
Okay. So we do have someplace to put it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So tied right into ours and it dumps right down into the North Fork drainage.
Okay.
Does it cause any, I mean, is there an unintended consequence for this, Gary?
No, we designed our system to accommodate this, quite frankly, knowing this would be coming, because we've been talking to. The chief and others for a couple of years about this and I kind of asked them to hold off till we got our system installed and in place and. They've been patient.
Yeah, we, we've known and so we're just kind of waiting to get everything lined up and so. We brought it up again this year, hoping that we can get started soon so we can be finished before the weather turns bad again.
How many years has this been a problem?
Longer than I've been there, so, long enough to be called Lake sixty-two whenever it backs up, so.
Been there for a while.
Yeah.
You know, uh, Chris here, good.
Okay, go ahead.
You know, we seem to be accelerating the amount of fixes we have on these side of the mountains. And I don't mind continuing with this, although these are things that a city will likely or would likely have to bear. It's the right thing to do to make sure that it's good, but I'd like to put that, those funds, uh, you know, we have that little pool of money. That we may not shell, and this probably got to be flagged there.
Yeah, I don't, well, that was gonna be my question is, why wouldn't we just let the new city do this?
It, it's up to you commissioners. Uh, the direction I got was get us some numbers and we'll see where the, where the money's gonna come from.
And I understand you're doing what you were told to do. Um. So, so you're looking, what pot of money we didn't take this out of, if, if it was approved?
Great question.
This would come out of the municipal services fund fund balance, so there's, I don't think it would qualify as a Prop one road or anything like that, so.
Yeah.
It's not a county-wide storm issue, it's just it affects your parking lot, which is important, but it's not county-wide, so. It would have to come from the municipal services fund fund balance.
So commissioners, as far as the help with the statute reads. Uh, there's a mandate that the county continue to provide the same municipal services that it has during the pendency of an incorporation process. From the time the vote to incorporate to when the city actually incorporates. As far as the funding goes, up until the time that the city incorporates, the county may allocate a share of its um. Funds coming in to assist with the new city startup expenses. Um, and then after the date of the incorporation, that's when they do have to share and uh divide that up. Um, but there is a statutory mandate, but discretion of course of how you prioritize your projects. Um, to continue providing the same municipal services um to that area of the county as well.
Well, we'd like to provide the same services, which includes land use, but we're getting sued because of that.
Yeah.
So, let's keep that in mind.
And that's the thing that we made in our argument to uh. With that lawsuit is that they're telling us to stop, but at the same time telling us to keep going up, both speaking out of both sides.
I mean, just down from the station, there's a half a dozen signs that say, stop.
Yep.
If you haven't seen those, you can drive by and see that.
Yeah.
So.
It's very frustrating.
Okay, no reason to be frustrated more than I have to be. So where are you at with this?
Commissioner Hart. I'm okay that we probably go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I, I'm gonna say, let's get this done. I mean, I've been by there for years and. It keeps getting lower and lower, or the road gets getting higher and higher, one of the two.
One of the other.
So, uh, but let's make a note of this, Sean.
Yes.
That, uh, when it comes time to do whatever we're going to do. With municipal service, this becomes uh memorialized, so look, we just. County put in eighty-seven thousand dollars for this, that very well could have been passed to the city.
Yep, easily.
Yeah. So, but I'm okay fixing your problem, Rick.
Well, thank you. We, uh, we were, fire appreciates that very much and we can get our parking lot fixed up and get moving on.
Yeah, just tell those people to stop suing us, they wouldn't mind. It doesn't make for good friends.
This, this does require a budget change and so I will enter a budget action because for today for you two to approve. Uh, we need to get that budget change approved first before I can approve the contract.
Got it. Okay.
I don't mind saying this in an open meeting, we have submitted our motion to dismiss that lawsuit, it's fully briefed. We're waiting for John Lewis's attorney, uh, for their motion to dismiss to be briefed and then we're gonna submit it to the court, but. Um, we feel good about our position.
Yeah, well, I do too. I just find it interesting that every time I open Ogden Valley News, which doesn't happen very often. There's articles in there about donating through the legal fund because they don't want the commissioners to approve any more PIDs.
Yeah, like we were to listen to the paper, we wouldn't be approving this one.
No.
Well, we're hoping to get a very strong statement from the court, um. Uh, saying that it's none of their, it's not their position to invade on the legislative branch.
Yeah.
Um, we don't think the court has any jurisdiction and so. Can't always predict these things of how they're gonna go, but we're pretty confident in how, how the case law reads.
Yeah, well, I don't disagree with that, we'll see what it is, but anyway, we'll continue to do our job.
Yeah.
Making sure we make the right decisions. In this case, I think it's the right decision regardless. So if you'll get that budget changed.
We'll get it entered today, it'll show on today, as soon as Sean proves it'll come to you guys.
Okay, gentlemen, anything else?
No, we're excited to help fire department out.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Thanks commissioners.
You got a good group of people up there in the valley.
We do. So are we off the record? I think, uh, well, I think you guys know where we stand. I mean, we are participating in the PID.
Yeah.
With you, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, if, if they ask us, we would definitely tell them.
And anyway, it's not your, it's not your dog to fight, but.
But we appreciate it. I mean, if we had to wait for the new city, honestly, if it went to them, it would be years.
Years.
If not, not happen at all, so.
Well, that's the reason, right, that's the reason I'm a yes vote on this because, yeah.
They're just, it's gonna be more than their capacity area be able to do it.
It'll, it'll hit them like a brick wall.
Yep, yep, so thank you very much.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Tell your folks, good job.
Thank you, thanks.
Thanks commissioners.
Alright, well, we are almost back on schedule, but not quite. You need a break or you okay?
No, but I tell you, I'm going strong.
Wow, surprise, alright. Looks like we're gonna go into closed session, discuss the person exchange or lease of real property. I'd entertain a motion.
This'll chair, I'll make a motion that we move into a closed session to, to discuss purchase, exchange. Or uh, sale of real property.
Lease of real property?
Yeah, uh-huh.
I'm gonna second that, roll call, roll call vote, Commissioner Hart.
Aye, yeah, yeah.
Commissioner Forre votes aye, we're now in a closed session.